Alright, not really any calls in the work session. So, purpose of this thing tonight here is we're going to establish an ad hoc committee. We're not going to discuss the rental code or anything like that. This is something that we want you guys to be involved in as we're developing it. It's just something to bring things on. I know everybody's all worked up about the rough draft they saw. But understand that it's just a conglomeration of different codes that Blake grabbed from different cities and threw it all in one pile. It means nothing. It is just a starting point for you all to get involved. So, the makeup of the committee, I don't know if Blake, have you had a chance to think about what you want to do with that? Makeup of the committee for sure, how it should look?
I felt like it would be sort of dependent on who puts forth theirself as a nomination. So, we see what we've got. I was imagining at least two landlords, two council members, a realtor, and maybe somebody from the financial sector as well. And ideally, someone from the general public as well.
Anybody want to see that makeup different?
I think you gotta have more than two landlords.
Three work? We can't get the committee so big because it'll be non-functional if we get it too big. Maybe you guys all get together and talk as it is. I mean, you guys got some representatives that you can trust to relay your wishes and...
We understood that tonight was going to be mostly informational and so we have held off on voting people as representative. Because we were coming here to understand more about what it is you're proposing.
This is never about talking about the code. This is always to develop an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, so from the letter that was sent out February 21st, there's a bolded spot that says this initial meeting is solely for the formation of an advisory committee and not for the public discussion of concerns and suggestions.
And that's not what I'm asking about. What I'm saying is, I was understanding that tonight was about discussing what it was you wanted to see in this committee. So, we have not elected individuals to come forth yet.
Okay. Like, you know what you would like to see from the committee for the representatives?
I would just like to see who would like to be involved on this committee that we will form. And that was what was stated on this. It's what was on the agenda posted last week. That's why we're here, is to get a list of names.
So, if you're normally doing these things, they're going to work through the code from scratch for whatever we're going to do and help develop the policy that's going to become part of our city ordinance. We did the same thing with the food trucks. We got them all involved. And at the end of the day, we made sure everybody's happy, everybody's interest represented. And it was something that isn't going to be so, I guess, limiting. Just guys don't get any business.
So, it was the intent to actually have people selected this evening?
No, we want you guys to make up this. But if you guys want to volunteer, we want to know who those volunteers are so we can start reaching out and start getting the meetings set up. I don't know which one of these council members are going to be on yet. But we want to make sure that you guys have a chance to get to representatives. I can't have every one of you sitting on the committee or we'll just sit here and doing this all night. Does that make sense, I guess?
Absolutely. So, if we select two or three, do they need to be approved by anybody?
By you guys.
By you guys, yeah.
They're your representatives on the committee.
If we pick two or three and we agree on a number, are they on then?
That will be determined on the man. Because then the mayors could be... I also want my... Yes. If you guys select three, most of them, not very clear.
So, they just have a date when we need to be two or three names?
I don't want this thing to drag out. So, if we could have like a week?
This is going to be a very long process. One more week is not a big deal.
So, we'll have a couple of council members selected and obviously Blake will be part of it and we need a realtor.
I will only be an advisory person to the committee. I will not be on the committee.
So, in the group, there's at least two realtors. Can they wear the realtor hat? Or would you rather have two realtors or a realtor that is not a landlord?
I would prefer if a realtor was not also a landlord.
Yes, Scotty, so you'd have to decide which one you want to represent.
Is that the same for the banker then also?
Yeah, I'd prefer to have somebody that's impartial. It doesn't have a skin in the game for the rental part of it. You guys all got a skin in the game.
I think I showed up early, but... I am an inactive realtor. I'm not going to be working right now, but still like that.
Are you interested?
Yeah, I definitely thought we were going to talk about my sewer problem, but... Yeah.
That's later.
But I try to own my house and I have no outside, knowing you got that, and pay rentals.
So, that's where we're at, you know? So, I'm okay with that. Are you guys okay with having three representatives of what you guys got going on? Two council members, a realtor, whether active or inactive, and replace somebody from the financial sector, just to see how that goes?
I don't, if I'm getting too far down the road, let me know. When you talk about skin in the game, one of my fears is not enough people in this process are going to have skin in the game. So, if somebody like Matt wanted to be on it, I would think he could be on as a lender. Why is skin in the game bad?
No, it's not. But again, if I have everybody at their best interest, it's going to be how it's going to be best for my rental market and not being able to see the global picture.
But I think we have that pretty well covered by the council and the city hall of people...
Well, they have somebody on council that obviously would have...
One, one.
I used to be another one.
Used to be, yeah, there's a difference. But I'm saying if Matt wanted to be as a lender, he couldn't be?
That's up to you guys. If you think he's going to be impartial, I think Matt would be greatly impartial. He'd be a good committee and I have no problem. I just want you guys to be comfortable with the people you select. We'll work with that anyway. We don't care. But we definitely don't, it's not something we're going to go pick and choose on our own. It's got to be you guys helping developing it. That's just, otherwise it'll never work. Ever, ever.
Well, that's what I just would hate to exclude any of these people because they own rentals. That seems kind of counterproductive saying, "Well, you can't be part of this because you're part of this."
I've been tapped into Tyson's here recently, so... It's not like we're not all available to get talked to. That's what we want to do. That's where we want to start out here, Matt. In fact, should we get your committee for people, representatives put together or whatever? I mean, if you guys want to say, "Hey, Matt, do you want to be the financial person on it?" We've taken paths for a predation to, you know? I'd like to put Matt's name in the path to be our financial person on that committee. I actually think that's a pretty good idea. I'd volunteer for it, please. He's been involved in a lot of the housing stuff, I think that's...
Good job.
That's one.
I covered financial.
So, we can get back in...
You can get back with your...
Well, yeah, I think we could establish a little bit of a timeline.
So, get it a week and then once you guys get together, we'll have, I don't know, Blake can lead the charge about when you want to get meetings put together?
And once the meetings are set and they're posted, just like every meeting.
Because that way, everybody wants to show up. You still can, but just understand is, you get too many voices in there and it just gets me...
We understand.
Same thing with up here. If I had all six council members up there, it would be a thing though.
So, are we taking volunteer council?
I would ask for volunteers for me.
I would not, if that's, I mean, such events, I would...
So, right now I got Tammy and Bethany for volunteer as councilmen.
We'll talk about that too. So, if we get you our nominees by Friday next, so not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where are they getting them to?
How about you?
I just want everyone on this.
The letter mentioned tenants. Are you not wanting them now?
No, we can have.
Yeah, are there any tenants here? Would you like to volunteer? Alex? What's your name?
Cody.
Cody.
I'm sure once, out to the public, there's going to be a lot of tenants in here because they're going to get their rents raised. You know, ultimately, they're going to go up all the cost. So, there's going to be tenants in here. I mean, it's not going to...
That's probably a discussion for later. And that's going to be up to you and your landlords, so I think it's fair. Thank you.
Well, it depends what happens after you guys get developed. I don't believe it's going to be down for fifteen years.
I don't think that, I don't think that they have to have a tenant.
Oh, I don't think so.
And I can see where that could be problematic. Yeah.
Would you guys like to see a tenant on there?
I'd like to have a tenant.
It's a good idea to have tenants.
It's going to be affected most, I think, would get this service done.
That's who we work with.
Right.
They're in this just as deep as we are.
Between the bunch, the bunch of you. We got one tenant.
Do you don't think we could have a few more tenants or...
I don't want the committee to get so big because it'll be, it'll be in our relevant committee.
We're at two now and we have one volunteer.
We're at four now. You guys are going to have, you're going to be...
But I mean, the two tenants?
Two tenants.
Three landlords, two council, that's us.
And we have one spoken for.
Saint George and six.
How many people do you want to see on this?
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, if we have a group like this sitting out here every time we have a meeting, it's going to be, this person's going to bitch, this person's going to bitch, this person's going to bitch, this person's going to bitch. We're not going to get anything done. Where if we have a small group...
How small are you thinking of?
Well, we just talked about the numbers.
Right now, you're at nine.
Nine.
Nine people.
Have that makeup being...
Three landlords.
And tenants and landlords can have their separate meetings and then landlords and the tenants can bring their bitches to us.
So, nine. It seems like, again, some of us is a cart and a horse and I don't know what has to go first, but somehow we've got to get some more tenants involved. And I'm not saying they have to come to meetings. But either we have to have another group that's below that group that gets, can get together and discuss or I think we have to offer it to a few more.
What you guys want to do with your tenants, if you guys want to meet with them outside the committee, that's your pride. They should have those decisions. But you want to bring them to the committee meetings, you're not going to get anything done again.
But I said, I don't, they have to go to these meetings, but somehow, ultimately, they're the most affected by this. They need to be represented. One more lucky renter, I don't think is enough. And I'm not saying that from the meetings, but we have to either, I was wondering, again, this is me the cart and the horse, about sending surveys out, call the renters in town and ask for input on a written survey or ask them to contact people to talk about concerns.
So, again, this would be a decision made by that same committee we're trying to make up right now. If that's something you want to do, so be it. Discuss at the meeting. We're not in that forum to make that right now. That's the whole point of making the committee, is to make those decisions. If you want more input from everybody, then do it.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm not getting in too much. I'm just saying, some of us is a discussion. And if we bypass this right now, we may not get it back in. I'm just saying, I think we need more input from renters ultimately. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, either that or the landlords talk to their renters and bring their concerns to the committee. Instead of having, like I said, instead of having thirty people sitting here and everybody wants a voice. I mean, realistically, that's the easiest way to do it. Because you know, you know your landlords or you know your tenants and you all talk to them and then you bring their concerns back to us or we have a committee for them. Come in, the two people or three people, whatever we end up with, are the tenants' representatives.
Like this, it was like committee of nine, decided you want to talk to all the tenants, every one of them. You guys can do that. Have another meeting with them. Have them bring to this other meeting, "Hey, tenants, we're going to have our subcommittee meeting right today about talking about the thing. We want your input." You guys can invite them all if you want. That's up to you. I don't want to get down in the weeds about that part because that's what I want the committee to do, is what they want to do.
I'm trying not to go in weeds myself. You say don't go in the weeds. We're not the ones initiating this process. You're delegating the responsibility, talking to people who are going to be the most affected by this and saying, "It's our job to talk to them." You're the ones initiating this process. Why don't we find a way for you to talk to them too?
Who do they pay a check to for their rent? Not to me.
Who are the ones that are complaining?
Right.
Exactly.
Who started all this?
Yeah, who started it?
Why?
Again, none of this was a complaint. We're trying to make something a code that you guys can all be, because there's nothing.
There's already a state code.
There's already state codes.
So, this is why, this is exactly why this meeting tonight is to make it ad hoc. I'm not here to listen to people bitch. I'm not listening to hear people talk about...
We're not bitching, we're just asking questions.
I'm already complaining about it.
We're just asking questions.
I've got comments about, "Oh, we got them, we have to raise the rates." That's could possibly be, that's up to you guys to decide.
How did this start in the first place? Why did this come about?
Because we have nothing on the books, nothing.
We got state code. That goes to the cities.
Well, we can bring the state in. We can start inspecting every rental.
That'd be houses too.
We can all.
And why isn't private houses?
That's every houses.
Why is it just rentals?
Because there's a state code on the books, 526A, the Uniform Landlord Tenant Act, which states, right off the bat, one of the purposes of that code is to make inseparable the right to collect rent from the obligation to maintain the premises. That's one of the very first purposes listed in that code. Further down in the code is the obligation to maintain premises. One of the first stipulations of that is that landlords shall follow all state and local building and housing codes.
Most of them are. But you know, here's the deal. If something looks bad from the outside or something, you drive up there and say, "Hey, clean it up." Or if somebody gives you a call and you got a complaint, you can go take care of the complaint. You've got to go this far and do it in respect to people's houses and charge the landlord money?
And again...
It's just going to cost the tenant. And times are bad. Food's high, gas is high, bad timing.
We're going off the track here.
Well, I don't think we are.
Yeah, we are.
This is exactly what we're saying.
That's why we're going off the track.
Specifically to form the ad hoc committee. If you don't want to be a part of it, or can't be a productive part of it, then I suggest you select somebody who can. So, that is what it is. All this discussion about what is going to happen, how things are going to be exact, that's all part of that committee. Not fifty people in here, because that's exactly what happens. You get ten people talking above each other and nothing gets talked. That's why it needs to get limited down to a number of nine or whatever that number is, which sounds like nine is kind of the number that we picked up. So, that's where we're at. Not trying to be difficult, I'm not trying to be anything. But the whole point is for you guys to have your involvement in developing this thing or whatever we can do to make it so it's not troublesome for everybody. So, you don't have to raise rates if we don't have to. God forbid, I know what you have to do. I do know times to come, Ron.
Yeah, that was a landlord in Cedar Rapids. It's been six hundred here, it's twelve hundred there. And now it's going to go to twelve hundred. Six hundred's going to be twelve hundred. It's going to, same thing's going to happen.
We don't know that, Ron. That's why we want to start this whole process. And that's, we have to, that's just what it is. That's the route we're going.
I wasn't trying to start all that, but I apologize if I pulled that away. But I ain't trying to say, you know, you're adding ball. I understand, we can gel the old hat, but ultimately, I don't live in my houses. They're very important to me, I mean, extremely, but I don't live. So, I don't want to forget about the tenants. They're just as important parts of us.
And that's me, you can speak with them as you want, tenants.
It just still seems like maybe you guys could help be a part of that since you're the ones initializing this, to reach out to them and do some work and learn something in the process. That's what I'm trying to say.
And why can't I have you guys do that as part of the committee?
The committee can't, and that's what, that's what I'm not, I don't... But I just want to make sure, because I don't want to get past the point and say, "Well, you should have spoke up." I'm speaking up for the renters. That's actually what I'm doing.
Would you like, I mean, would you like us to come up with a survey for the tenants then?
I just wanted to make sure it happens. I know we're not discussing all that. I just want to make sure they're part of this. I'm not speaking for everybody here, but I'm saying, I want them to be part of this because they have the more skin in the game. If anybody in this room, because people live in our homes, it's their home. So, I don't want them to be overlooked. That's all I'm saying. I'd rather overlook me than them.
Hey, I would not be qualified to write that statement to anybody.
And I assume as many can. I'm just getting it out there. That's what I'm doing. So, let's move on.
Which I, I think this, realistically, I think this is going to take at least a year or more to get figured out so we can get some kind of an ordinance. And that's what this whole committee thing is about, is to try to work out everything before we do it. We're not going to jump in six months from now and throw an ordinance out saying, "You got to do this, you got to do that." We're going to get this ironed out before we start it. And it may not change a goddamn thing, but... What if a renter wants to refuse? What if a renter wants to refuse? Say, "Everything's fine here, I don't want inspection." I mean, I can't walk into a... Those are the things we got to work out. That's what we got to work out, Terry. And that's what committees are supposed to do.
Like you're around and like, everyone could give you ten reasons why it can't work. Like, just absolutely the worst idea in the world. Think about five reasons it's going to make it a good thing. And that room knows that.
I could tell from experience, when I was in business, to some of the shit that I walked into in this town.
Well, you're going down that path there, Ron. If we're not going down...
I'll stop.
The meeting's Friday.
The meeting's Friday. Week from Friday.
And then, so we do that and then the next order of business is bringing those people together?
Yes. With the, I believe, just a...
And letting them form their own agenda and their own timeline?
Yes.
And their own way to initiate?
Initiate how they want to go forward.
Whatever contact they want to be made with tenants?
Correct.
Okay.
And all that. Staff will be here to assist.
That's right, and staff will be here to assist. That was my next question. We can assist them.
Not going to just let, let everybody just hang on their own by this, but there will be, I believe, progress along the way for everybody to, for the committee to meet. You know, just like any project we do, we have a timeline, you know?
So, if this...
So, it has to be established by the committee.
If this group is going to go forward tonight and go someplace and meet and talk and get names back, then they can, you guys can also pick the date for the first meeting and... And, okay. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on the timeline and that names aren't dropped off and it's up to Melissa to pick a meeting date or something.
Just to clarify, you're saying that whoever we pick, you guys will appoint, correct?
Yeah, why would I disagree with you guys?
I just want to make sure.
I can only speak for myself, but yes, that would be the best way for us to go about it.
Yeah, we're not going to, no, whatever you guys want, I'll do it.
Angie's asking. Someone was bringing up, it might not have been Angie.
I've done them here, alright.
If we're not on the committee, can we come to meetings?
Yes, they have to. They're always going to be posted, well, if they can. But again, you don't want to get a bunch of people and you're going to have to control the meetings. Whoever's running it, that you don't get a lot of chit-chat or background.
Okay, so, if our, if more renters wanted to come, they can come and sit and mind their...
Anybody, they're not closed meetings. They're open to the bug.
That helps.
They can be posted on the website.
Five thousand people in there if you want.
Because there's so many landlords, but there's a lot more rent. And that's why I just want to make sure, that's my point, is we're a smaller group. They're a much bigger group. So, let's open it up.
Will they be posted on the website?
Yeah, they can be. I don't know why they shouldn't be. Yeah. They can be posted wherever you want. But with a greasepan, it depends a lot. Yeah, there's nothing, the meetings aren't closed. You're just going to have that main group that's going to make the voting decisions for you.
Right, okay, that's, that's a clarification point. That's good. Good question, Angie.
Yeah, you're questioning.
Or whoever it was.
Rick, do you have anything? I didn't know if you're a wristman in a Ronzy or...
No, no, not yet.
This is not meant to be adversarial people, it's just a story.
But it is.
Are we about done or...
Yep. I am.
I won't speak to these people. I won't speak to these people. I'll speak to myself and maybe this all speak for some of them anyway.
You're going to let us go on the next meeting.
This is extremely important, all the people.
Sounds good.
Extremely. And I just, I think for myself, what's concerning about all this is, I didn't know there were problems that needed address. Obviously, I've been in places that are bad, that are privately owned and renter occupied. There's bad stuff everywhere. There's worse landlords that get all that. But it's just the fact that it seems like the city kind of has a goal here that we just never knew about. And now, it's kind of like, and I'm not trying to be a jerk, there's a little bit of a, "Hey, this is going to be good for you. Just kind of, you know, listen up and this will be fine." We're not, I don't think too many of us in this room are sure it's going to be fine. But it's...
That's why the committee is here.
Right, and I understand. And I'm just saying, when you say, it almost makes you a little, everybody's a little surprised that we're upset, concerned. We don't know, it's the unknown and we're a little, I'm a little scared of it. I'm perfectly okay to say, "I'm a little scared of this."
Nothing is going to come up here to get voted on until you guys are all good with it. That's, that's what it comes down to. But we might have state law that we're going to have to follow and you guys will have to follow too. And that's...
I don't want state laws we're not going to follow, but you're saying if you guys decide something that you don't like, that it's not going to happen?
That is the same thing we did with all the others, like the food trucks and everything else. They had to be okay with every part of the ordinance before we voted off.
But probably good too, because the unknown was worried. So, when things were being talked about, "Oh, yeah, we need to do this." We didn't know really why. We didn't know what, why and what and how. And now it's just, you mean, show up and you say, "Well, we're not going to discuss it." And again, I'm not trying to sort of fight, just, it's like, well, when do we get to discuss it and tell you our concern? Because again, this doesn't affect you guys like it does us. It's completely different. And I just want you guys to understand that.
This is why we're not discussing the six people and you guys who are the representatives of all landlords are going to be part of it.
Are.
And that's the whole point. I don't want you guys not to be part of it. And it's why you're here.
That makes me feel better. I, it just, it felt a little bit like Big Brother saying, "Okay, we're going to, you know, get you guys in control here."
But Big Brother also just kicked in the ass by the, everybody else, you know? At the end of the day.
Right.
But if you guys can't help develop, because you always want to protect your tenants, you want to make sure they have a good place to live. You guys know how it looks, should look, and what's going to be best for everybody. That's what we want to see. We want you guys' input to make it so it's beneficial for everybody.
It did, to me, feel like that up until this meeting. It did, to me, feel like that up until this meeting. It didn't really feel like it was something that's going to be that positive thing for me, so I'm hoping it's...
Again, if everybody saw the rough draft and thought, "Oh, my God, this is the final thing," which it never was.
It's not even a rough draft.
Yes, not even that. It was just a conglomeration of potpourri, of crap, and we just grabbed it, threw together and it all took its gossip.
If the roles reversed and this was, we're the ones in charge and we had a rough draft for owner occupied homes, if you guys put yourself in our shoes, I think you would say you'd be a low concern too. I mean, try to look at it from our side is what I'm saying.
And try to look at it from ours. That's why we're here to get the meetings set up and get the committee going so you guys can work on it as a team, my gosh.
That's, I'm, that's, I, it makes me feel a little better. I hope that's true in what we're all saying, so...
It'll become what you guys make of it as the committee, as representatives.
That's the best way to, it's going to be what you make. So...
And there's nobody in here that doesn't want to follow laws and state law. I mean, there's nobody in here that wants a terrible place. I hope not. If they are, they should leave. They shouldn't be in this business, so I hope we all have the same interests.
There it is. We all want to have the same shared interest, then we're providing the best things we can.
Okay, we can agree on that.
Renters, owners, whatever.
Right.
Angie, do you have any other questions? Anybody else? Don't have anything. Get some people that feel us a week from Friday. Perfectly by like, perfectly by like noon it's going to be, she might take off on Friday afternoon.
Okay, thanks, guys.